Consideration.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearing number five B.
Chairman, Chairman Gong. I just, before you start in consideration of this matter, RMA has received requests from Richard Harriman for continuance of this matter. Staff recommends that the planning commission, here's staff presentation, opens the public hearing, receive comment from the applicant, I think the city of Dinuba is here as well, and any members of the public that wish to comment, receive all those comments, and then continue the public hearing without closing it to a date certain, that being, I believe, October fourteenth at nine AM.
Sounds like, sounds like plan. Okay, this is final site plan number PSR one four zero zero five, Richard Best Transfer and Company and Wyatt E. Best. This is the final site plan number PSR one four zero zero five to allow the expansion of an existing freight forwarding terminal and a master site plan for the six partial hundred and ten acre Port of Ivory Industrial Park located in the M two SR zone. The site is located on the south of Avenue four thirty between Road sixty-eight and Road seventy-two near Dinuba. And I guess Aaron is the contact.
Chairman Gong.
Switching the names.
Commissioner Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Before you today, as stated, it's the final site plan for PSR fourteen dash zero zero five, Richard Best Transfer Incorporated, and this includes an addendum to an adopted negative declaration and the master site plan for the Port of Ivory Industrial Park. As you stated, the project involves improvements to a freight forwarding terminal that is allowed by right in the site's M two heavy manufacturing zone, as are the activities of current tenants of the Port of Ivory Industrial Park. The final site plan, project application was required by the SR site review combining zone overlay on the site, includes additional review findings and conditions of approval. So the request today, as stated by Mr. Washam, is that staff will make the presentation that will open the public hearing. Chuck Littlefield from Richard Best Transfer will present on behalf of the applicant, and there might be another presentation as well immediately afterwards by the applicant. Then we would receive other public comments and continue the public hearing to date certain, October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. The overall master site plan for the six parcel hundred and ten acre Port of Ivory Industrial Park shows tenants currently on the site. From the, taking the parcels from the north, there's a trucking terminal for the Merit Monte sanitation, the main office building, wood chip providers, Greens Best and ALW, Mission Agriculture, and to the south, the RBT freight forwarding yard. By way of background and timeline, RBT's two thousand eleven grading permit, oh, wrong one. The site began operating as a sawmill in the nineteen forties and closed in two thousand. The first rail spur from the main railroad line was installed in nineteen forty-eight. Use permits for the sawmill and expansions were approved in nineteen forty-eight, sixty-seven and seventy-three. Zone change, PZO seven dash zero one zero was approved in January of two thousand eight, and complaints were received after the appeal period ended. RBT's two thousand eleven grading permit for adding rail spurs was determined to be exempt as an agricultural-related project. Neighbors expressed objections due to the noise and dust. A settlement agreement was signed in April of two thousand twelve. Interim measures, including a dirt berm and landscape screening, which have been improved already, were immediately addressed, and the remaining concerns included a final site plan, which is being addressed through this entitlement. Application for the PRC was made in November of two thousand fourteen. PRC reviewed the project in December of two thousand fourteen, and an application for the final site plan was submitted. A traffic study and noise analysis, as required by the settlement agreement, were submitted in January of two thousand fifteen. General Plan Consistency. Outside any county adopted urban area boundary or urban development boundary, properties are subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. An RVLP analysis was conducted for PZ O seven, O one zero, resulting in a score of eleven points, indicating the site was eligible for non-agricultural zoning. Approximately, this project is approximately one thousand feet west of the Dinuba city limits and outside the county's UDB and UAB, but within the city's adopted twenty-year urban boundary. No annexation is currently planned for the site, and therefore it is consistent with city zoning for industrial uses at this time, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that fact later. So here's a general plan map of the county adopted UABs and UDB, and you can see the RBT site along Road seventy-two and Avenue four to twenty-four is outside the county adopted UDB and UAB. A two thousand seven aerial of the property shows the surrounding properties to be agricultural to the west, south and east, with scattered rural residents to the south and east of the property. Access to the site is via Avenue four to thirty, which is very important, from the south via Road seventy-two or Avenue four thirty-two from the north. The subject site zoning was changed in two thousand eight from AE twenty to M two SR, heavy manufacturing site review combining through PZO seven dash zero one. The M two zone allows wood and lumber processing, such as the industrial parks tenants Greens Best and ALW Enterprises, and feed mills, such as Mission Ag Resources. The M two zone allows any use permitted in the M one and C three. Service commercial zones. The C three zone allows freight forwarding terminals and yards, such as RBT's railroad trucking transloading facility, and the C three zone allows by right, and the C three zone allows by right trucking terminals with repairing and overhauling, such as Mariboni sanitation. The SR site review combining zone requires a final site plan with additional review findings and conditions of approval. No buildings or relocation permits shall be issued or land use permit approved until a final site plan has been reviewed and approved, and that's why we are here today. So the site plan, the final site plan, has very few changes, really. See if this'll work. If you could see this area right here, this is the proposed commodity barn. Right, right here? The proposed commodity barn, see right there? And in addition, there is the additional train track that would be used. It also includes the hardcore, hard car loader and the other mechanical equipment, which should lessen the vibration and noise on the facility. This site plan was a requirement, as agreed to, as were all the facilities you see, all the proposed facilities you see, and mechanisms were agreed to in the settlement agreement. So here are some site photos. You can see the front office, and the beginnings of some of the screening on, to the left on the picture. You can see some of the screening that's now mature around the surrounding, around the surrounding property. The screens Mariboni from Road sixty-eight and Avenue four thirty-two. This is a view of the, as you can see in the corner picture, the railroad traffic warning lights and crossing bar, which was also requested through the settlement agreement on Avenue four twenty-four west of Road seventy-two. And the bottom photo shows the mature landscaping that screens the rail yard from residences on Avenue four twenty-four. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Visalia Times Delta on September fourth, two thousand fifteen, with a eighteen-day public comment period. Notification was also sent to Mr. Richard Harriman and the Dinuba citizens for responsible planning, the DCRP. Comments were received from Richard Harriman, the DCRP, and one surrounding neighbor to date, and those are in the record, and those are in the package which we submitted, or are submitting. County staff has responded to all the comments, and I will go through those towards the end of the presentation, but we are subject to more comments, and we will address those by our next hearing. We did receive a request from the city of Dinuba for, for the package, and I just wanted to go through some of the discussion we've had with the city and the city comments. As I've stated, the site is approximately one thousand feet west of the Dinuba city limits and within the city of Dinuba's adopted twenty-year urban boundary. You can see it's designated industrial reserve, and there's no annexation planned at this time. So the city comments. The city responded to a consultation request on January sixth, two thousand fifteen, to advise that the project would be consistent with the city zoning for industrial uses, with approval of the administrative site plan review, and the city standards are comparable to county development standards, which are included as conditions of approval for the project. And as of yesterday, the city had no further comment and is present today if you have any questions of them. So getting to the settlement agreement. The RBT facility has been operating on the site since two thousand one, and is developing out the site to allow longer trains to unload on-rail spurs that are off the main line. The two thousand twelve settlement agreement, which is attachment six in your package, was in response to the noise and dust complaints by the DCRP and Richard Harriman. Agreement required a master site plan with a noise study and a traffic study, which have been completed and are a part of the addendum to the ISND. Other requirements were the construction of the commodities building and a hard car unloader over the tracks along the eastern side of the barn building, and the applicant will go into a further discussion on those mechanisms. The noise study. The existing conditions, the baseline that was studied, included the commodities are removed from the rail cars with sledgehammers or vibrating equipment that shakes the cars. Noise is buffered by the dirt berm with landscape trees and bushes between the rail yard and the residences on the east. The settlement agreement interim measures limited unloading activities to the middle spurs with rail cars parked on the eastern spurs to buffer noise. For public safety, trains blow horns when crossing Avenue four twenty-four. The proposed improvements. An electrical hard car unloader will scrape commodities out of the rail cars more quietly with a reduction of two hundred and twenty minutes to twelve minutes of potential hammering. Noise from the hammers and vibrating equipment will be all but eliminated, and we have added a condition per petitioner's request that they will not employ these measures unless necessary. The pull barn will be used to store commodities until loaded onto trucks for delivery. The additional rail will allow the rail, road to put more cars into the site, upwards of twenty, with less switching back and forth and for a lesser amount of time. The conclusion is of the noise study, the current and proposed onsite operations will have less than a significant impact on nearby residences. Access to the Port of Ivory site for trucks and cars is from the north, based on the traffic study, meaning Avenue four thirty at Road sixty-eight. Average daily trips are roughly forty-six ADT, which is fifty percent from trucks. From industrial park tenants, it's roughly about two hundred and six ADT estimated. Conclusion. The existing road network is adequate to accommodate the proposed development through the year twenty forty, based on the models and studies within the traffic study, and no mitigation is recommended. There was the additional safety feature which was added, including the flashing lights and crossing arms that have been installed on the main railroad line at Avenue four twenty-four west of Road seventy-two. The additional rail will allow more, the additional rail built on the site will allow more cars to pull into the site. Rail traffic has been reduced by fifty percent since more rail spurs were installed on the site since two thousand eleven, and any additional rail spurs will even reduce it further. The conclusion from the traffic study was there was a less than significant impact. So as stated, you have the comments before you from the petitioners and a neighbor, and I'll go through those as quickly as I can here, but I did want to spend some time responding to some of these comments. In response to comments, Richard Harriman states that he was retained by the Dinuba citizens for responsible planning. One of the members, previous members, Ruben Navarro, has stated that he is satisfied with the project and does not stand in opposition to the project. That there was not enough sufficient time to review the records. Notice was sent on September fourth, giving eighteen days, not ten days, prior to this hearing, and staff is recommending continuing the hearing nonetheless. In the interim, you should have received an email from Richard Harriman. He has offered to be involved in a discussion with the applicant and RMA staff, which the RMA staff supports, and will do our best to schedule in the interim between now and the continued planning commission hearing on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. Some of the other comments was that there was an incomplete and deficient master site plan for the Port of Ivory. While similar to other site plans, the master plan included the locations of the business and includes brief operational statements that have been included in the staff report and addendum to the adopted negative declaration. Further comments were that it was a deficient master site plans, there was a lack of a water plan. Now these water, the actual planning documents, the engineering documents are not readily available, but most of them were established in the nineteen forties and fifties by a number of the previous owner, property owners, and are not a requirement of the Tulare County for master site plans. There was a question on the lack of fire suppression. The applicant did include the fire hydrant system on the site plan, and the fire department was satisfied with the plan for our consultation. There was a question about a lack of a twenty-year plan. The settlement agreement itself acknowledged that development of the site plan would occur over time, so that wasn't necessarily a requirement of the settlement agreement or on the county's behalf. There was a question about the lack of analysis for internal rail movement and circulation. The applicant and the railroad is governed by the Surface Transportation Board and the Federal Railroad Administration, and is subject to SJVR's San Joaquin Valley Railroad's scheduling and delivery methods, and have feasibly considered other alternatives, which I'm sure will be the subject of our conversation. Response to comments. The two thousand seven negative declaration adopted on January twenty-ninth, two thousand eight is outdated and inadequate. The addendum to the adopted negative declaration provides clarifications and amplifications of previous comments on the environmental background, and is based on data and information that is less than eight months old. The traffic and noise analysis was prepared per the settlement agreement by outside consultant VRPA in December two thousand fourteen through January two thousand fifteen, and includes a current analysis of traffic impacts on Road seventy-two at Avenue forty-three. The operational statements are minimal and inadequate. The settlement agreement specifies an updated operational statement for the RBT expanded development proposed for approval. There was a operational statement that was included as part of the settlement agreement. We've had that updated, including going to each one of the tenants who were required to provide information about average daily trips, vehicles, equipment used onsite, employees, and potential hazardous, hazards to RMA's staff satisfaction, consistent with other operational statements in Tulare County. The master site plan resolution should include fixed limits for expansion. The county zoning ordinance differentiates between a special use permit and a final site plan. The latter is for the use that complies with zoning, but requires additional review findings and conditions of approval, which is all before you today. The findings for zoning compliance do not include limits on expansion. Response to comments from Roger Wodaski regarding noise, odor, and dust. Mr. Wodaski's comments have been substantially reviewed and considered. Staff still found the impacts were less than significant because the project's noise study considered his location, and the project will limit impacts to the surroundings, including noise, odor, and dust. This project lessens the impacts through its project features. For public safety, the train blows the horns when crossing Avenue four twenty-four. Federal law mandates two longhorn blasts, a short, and a long. The crossing arm and warning lights were installed on Avenue four twenty-four as a recommended safety feature through the settlement agreement. Wodaski's comments continued, the current onsite unloading noises, vibrations will be limited by the project. The MPK hard car unloader is electric and will change the unloading process and greatly reduce the noise. Wodaski's comments are generally in regards to the hammering that occurs onsite, which this will limit, and it will also speed up the unloading of the cars and the moving of the cars, which will also limit noise on the tracks. The additional track will lessen at least one backup required by SJVR and reduce the timing of idling, which was another one of his complaints. Operational hours. While a larger portion of the cars on this line are the Port of Ivory's, many belong to other customers on the line. There is no way to schedule service time from SJVR between certain hours because the trains arrive at all hours of the day and night. Unloading activities on the site take place between dawn and dusk, so limiting the times from six to six should be sufficient. There is a complaint that they might start at five-thirty. It may have happened in a few instances, but we will put, make sure the conditions are followed and add conditions that operations will occur from six to six as far as the onsite. The unloading stated occurs whenever SJVR can get the, the trains there. Further response to comments. Truck traffic on Road seventy-two. Access to the Port of Ivory, there was a complaint that there's too much traffic on Road seventy-two. Access to the Port of Ivory sites for trucks and cars is via Avenue four thirty at Road sixty-eight. Port of Ivory's tenants' trucks do not use Road seventy-two or Avenue four twenty-four, but take Avenue four thirty to Alter or Buttonwill to Mountain View. A nearby packing company is the one that uses Road seventy-two regularly. There were some questions about the site design. The project will add more rail and allow the railroad to put more cars into the facility and reduce the amount of switching activity. Per the applicant, before POI installed additional rail spurs in two thousand eleven, they could only take twenty cars at a time, which required the railroad to service them twice daily, six days a week. They now get served once a day on a five, mostly five days per week, with an occasional six-day on an as-needed basis. The applicant has reduced rail activity by fifty percent already. Additional rail will reduce that further. One other neighbor, Donna Springs, sent in a letter. I think the train siren noises have already been addressed. Loud noises will, will and have been addressed. There was a concern over air emissions. The applicant is in compliance with all the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District requirements. There has been, the berm and screening trees have been built, and bushes were installed along the eastern property boundary by the rail yard in order to reduce wind-blown dust from stored commodities. The landscape screen is required to be continually maintained. And with that, that completes staff's report today. There will be a recommended motion, and as stated, we would recommend that the hearing be continued to date certain, October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and then have Chuck Littlefield and the applicant present.
Yes. Let's take a, what, a three-minute recess or a five-minute? What do you want, Bill?
Oh, quick.
Five-minute. We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll reconvene at maybe around twenty-five o'clock, about... Okay, let's reconvene to our meeting here. So I'm gonna open the public comment section portion at this time, so I guess we have a speaker right already, right?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Chuck Littlefield, and I work for Richard Best Transfer and the Port of Ivory. What I wanted to kind of do here is just kind of go through a real short slide presentation that kind of describes and gives you a better idea of the scope of what we're trying to accomplish and how it fits within this, this facility. So real quickly, we'll just kind of go through this. One of the things that we've talked about is the, let's see, it's not changing the picture. What's that? Oh, there you go.
Do you have a leader out there somewhere?
Yeah, the other slide.
My five-year-old grandson.
Well, I'm gonna load that, that's... While we're waiting, do, do we have another meeting in October, just one or two?
October fourteenth, the next one will be the twenty-eighth, so two weeks. So one, the twenty-eighth?
Meeting on the twenty-eighth? Oh, oh, there is, yes, okay.
Fourteen and twenty-eight?
Fourteenth and the twenty.
And the twenty, it should be, yeah.
Talking about a November third special.
Although we should have a special one on, uh, November third.
So that's gonna be the Barinette week, right?
Right. Is there that, that housing deadline? So one of the first things that we've been talking about is, is the construction of the commodity barn in this facility or the building that we're talking about. That's where all of the products or as many of the products onsite will go on inside this. Now what I'm showing you here is the construction of a similar type of facility doing the same type of thing that we're doing. This one's in Canaho, California. So this is a very similar building to what we're looking at, which is like a steel span structure. We're doing it in phases. There we go. And we'll kind of see how this, this progresses to show exactly what, what we're looking at with the construction of ours. In, in our, in our first phase of the construction of the commodity barn, basically, this, this becomes a... basically, this becomes a glorified pole barn in the initial stages. But it's being designed so that we can enclose it and that it's being structurally sound on the roof to be able to support solar panels, too. So we're looking down to the future to be able to utilize these buildings. This one in this picture is like a 125 by 400. Ours will be 150 feet wide by 400. So, very similar type of structure. Ours will have a higher ceiling to be able to contain more product. Ultimately, this is what we want to get to, which would be everything enclosed. You see where this tall structure right here? Well, there's the elevator where the product unloads from rail cars through a pit system that goes underground up this elevator and into the roof of this complex and unloads the product from the very top. And with the capacity and the size, we're looking at being able to house the equivalent of 10-unit trains or 100,000 tons of various dairy feeds. Mainly dry distillers grain, corn, gluten, canolas will fit with inside this barn. That, these are the feed commodities that go out to the dairies here in the Hanford Tulare and Basalia markets. This here is just a side view of the drawing of the building that we're proposing. And you can see with the conveyor belt system running through the top, product would be augered in. It will drop from the ceiling, and you can see from the angle proposed of the product as it drops in. So, like I said, that's where we will maximize the ability of this building to be able to house most of the grains all inside.
Phil?
Yes?
When do you expect to have the thing fully enclosed?
Well, we're doing it in stages. So the first part is, of course, getting our permits, getting through this process. We want to do it in phases where we construct the hard car unloader first. That would be within 60 to 90 days, and then we'll start the construction of the building. As far as enclosing it down the road, we'll probably talk about greater than a year, maybe 18 months before it becomes fully enclosed. Now, this is the product that, one of the products that we unload here. This is dry distiller screens, and this is the by-product from the ethanol process. So, this product's all produced in the Midwest. The corn goes into the ethanol plant. The mash part, the residue that's left after the process, is then taken and dried. So, that's why this is, it's heated through a process, and this is the end product. Now, depending on when it gets loaded and the moisture content determines on how easy or hard that product is to unload. So, when you expose that to the heat elements, which we're currently in, you've got seasons for this particular product. During the cold winter months, or basically from October to May or June, this product flows pretty evenly. But during the summer months, when it gets loaded in the Midwest, rides through the rail cars, depending on the moisture, depending on the heat, it also has the ability to cake up. And as you can see in the photos, you can see it gets pretty hard. That's what creates the need for a hard car unloader. I'll show you another photo here that shows how this stuff arrives in the cars. So as you can see, the cars are full to the top. Sometimes that product is so packed in there, it's like almost walking on concrete. And you can see on the picture on the right there, how it cakes up and adheres to the sides of the walls. That's what makes this really hard, and that's what we're having to use a combination of vibrating technique along with just manpower, using sledgehammers to try to loosen this from the side of the car.
Couldn't those cars be coated with some sort of a coating that would be less adhesive?
What's that? Could they be?
Sort of a coating, like a Teflon type of a surface or something, so it wouldn't stick so, do it so hard?
Well, I mean, all different types of things are being studied. I mean, one of the main processes, or the thought is, is make sure that the product has the least amount of moisture possible. Sometimes what you see in the manufacturing process is that they get, there's such a demand for this product that they don't let it fully dry. So they put it in with more moisture content. Well, and as that heats up, that's what causes it to cake up. So, we constantly are going back to the manufacturer as we get these hard-type cars to review their process, because when they fully dry it, it flows a lot better. So that's one of the main focuses that we're looking at. Now, there's three different types, the way the industry uses right now, of unloading these type of cars. And this is really focused on the dry distiller screens. I mean, this is the only type of product that we really have that sticks to this degree. The canolas, which are pelletized, you'll see a lot of these products that are pelletized, which it flows like water. So, very quiet, very easy to unload. But this product right here is the product that is the most difficult product to unload. So the industry uses a car hoe, which I'll show you a photograph of, the MPK unloader, and then we'll show you what we do currently. This device right here is called the car hoe. It's mounted to the side of the track, and that mechanism pivots. So it'll, as the cars come underneath it, it'll pivot over. And it has a probe that attacks that product from the top side. Basically, it stirs it, agitates it, breaks it loose from the side, and it falls through. Now, this particular product in the industry, while some use it, it's not being found to be very effective overall because you need to have a lot of support structure to get the biggest bang for your buck. So with only being mounted on the side, it's limited in what its capabilities are compared to what most of the industry prefers, which is called the MPK unloader. This is the device that we're talking about right here, which is the MPK hard car unloader. You build the structure completely over the tracks. It has a deep concrete foundation, and you can, you center it. It's electrically operated, and in some instances, it has so much power that folks use it to index cars also. So they'll put it in that product, and they'll index the cars to move it over the pit. We certainly don't have that intention for it, other than to just break loose the product. It, right now, is the most effective that the industry has. Now, that link, we... Okay, all right, that's fine. Well, this is what RBT currently uses. And this is an invention that RBT has built, which is this excavator, which you see there, with an adaptive head that vibrates, and it does it in such a frequency and a synchronization that it aids in the facility or the breaking up of that product. So that product will release and come through. The other thing about it is, is it's portable, so you can move it anywhere up and down the side of that car and apply wherever you see that product sticking. So, you, we are using this in conjunction with individuals with the sledgehammers breaking and hitting, which I have a film to show you how we do that. But this is how our current process is, and while this, depending on the flowability, this can take up to quite some time getting one car unloaded. Usually, these cars have four bays. We can spend up to as much as an hour per bay trying to get that one car unloaded with this method. So, that's where the MPK comes into play. The utilization of that device can take a car down to 20 to 30 minutes per car. So, it unloads it, and it, as we said, it manipulates it from the top. Now, this is our mechanism, and here's our supervisor. So, our guys are assisting with breaking that product loose from the sides using sledgehammers. And you can see we got one guy on the other side, and we've got these two gentlemen here. So, it can be quite a lengthy process. Do I just reduce this so that I can get to the video? Just do that, or what?
Can I just reduce it?
Reduce it? And go to... Yeah, it's on here. Or is it, is it already on here? No, that's the MPK. Okay, no. What's that?
It's not showing right now.
Yeah, no. Hmm. Well, at least we get the sound effects.
Go ahead, let's just stick with the presentation.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Now, at least, sorry about the video not working, but at least you see, this is the process. This is the banging with the sledgehammers. This is what we're having to currently do in combination with that excavator to get this type of product out of the car. So the answer to the solution, after evaluating all the different type of systems, we've gone with the purchase of the MPK unloader. This thing is, this thing is electric. It has a long probe that attaches to the end there. So, we have purchased it, we have it onsite. There's our auger system that would go underground with the pit where the car spots directly over. As this agitates the product, it falls through, and it augers through and into the commodity barn that we're talking about. So, this has been highly effective. Like I said, it reduced, can reduce from four hours per car to 30 minutes per car. So, it greatly reduces the time that we have and the noise. It eliminates the banging on the cars, it eliminates the vibration. Like I said, everything is directly from the top. So, this is gonna be a huge addition and solution to not only our problems, but to our neighbors' problems as well.
Question, Mr. Littlefield. I keep going back to the manufacturer. This problem has, originates at the manufacturer. Is there any way to put some economic pressure on the manufacturer to get your product in such a state that it doesn't cause you these issues?
Well, one of the manufacturers is Archer Daniel Midland. And we are, we have a strong relationship, but this is, a lot of this is their product that is coming this way. So, in some instances, we have been able to get them to do at least an internal study to refine their processes. So, the best, what they've referred to us as their current process is that they're looking into it, they're evaluating it, and of course, they want to see that product flow as well, too, because they're looking at asset utilization on this equipment and turnaround times as well. So while we're still seeing instances where it does happen, we just had a recent one where the manufacturer, not of theirs, but of a different type of product, had too much moisture in it as well. So we've gone back to that manufacturer and brought that to their attention. And so right now, we're working through a very similar issue with them with regards to how they make this product. Because therein lies the problem. If you cook it right, if you heat it at the right amount of time, that should be the solution to the overall problem.
That's what I would think. And I would think if Archer Daniel Midland is a big company, you might not be able to do without them. But some of these other people that aren't providing your product that you can work with, I think you probably should not do business with them and put some economic pressure. The other side of that coin is you're spending a whole bunch of money on this end trying to unload it. Maybe you offer to pay them a little bit more for their product if they can get it to you in a better condition.
Sure, that's certainly a possibility. You know, this has been an industry problem, and it's not, it's not just with Archer Daniel Midland, it's with the Cargills of the world, it's with everybody that manufactures. Gavilon is another one that manufactures this product. It's the ethanol process. So they've been looking at it, and this is what they all use. I mean, all of the big unloading facilities throughout the country. This is the device that has solved the problem. And this also could be the very reason why it's become a condition of doing businesses, is that you have one in case for those situations. But your point is very well made, and we constantly will keep that focus with the manufacturers to make this product more flowable.
Maybe you ought to just stop making fuel out of food.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
This is the picture, the overhead picture of the facility. This basically shows our car capacities as of to date. I wanted to show you this because where the tracks are right now, in this general area, let's, right here, where's my, oh, there's my pointer. That commodity barn will go right here in this general area. And the hard car unloader, the device that we just saw, will mount and go over a proposed track that will come down along this side that will contain another 20 cars. that will come down along this side that will contain another twenty cars of room. So that's from the overhead picture. Now, this is the onsite view. So this is the onsite view after the railroad has just spotted in the last cut of cars. Our proposed construction, looking from a ground level, is this additional track that will maintain the hard car unloader will come off of this track right here and run down where you see these gentlemen standing right there is where this track will parallel and tie back in at the other end of the north end. And this general area here is where you'll see the commodity barn in relation to the tracks. So this is, this is the proposed plan with the trackage and how you see with the barn. So this is the additional track. Where's my pointer again? So this track is, these tracks are already in place. This is the additional track that I was talking about that will be constructed along with this, that will house an additional twenty cars. So you can see, this is where the commodity barn will go. And I believe you see the dimensions are one fifty by four hundred. And that hard car unloader will fit in this general area. And that will auger into this building. And like I said, the capacities will be able to hold the equivalent of ten unit trains inside this complex. So it's taking what we currently have outside and it's bringing it inside. And by doing so, that reduces, because this will drop from under the car, it'll be in a self, self-enclosed system and it'll go into this building and it'll facilitate dust removal or dust reduction, noise reduction. And like I said, it will greatly facilitate getting these cars out in a more timely fashion.
Excuse me, so then it's in the barn, has to go back into trucks, I'm assuming, or does it go back into rail cars?
No, it'll go, it'll go back into trucks.
Into trucks, and where is that done? If it's in this barn, so are the trucks going through or are they...
Well, we'll have the capability to drive through and load on the inside. And if we need to, we can load from the outside. And just so that everyone can understand the flow of how these trains come to us. This is a map of the San Joaquin Valley Railroad system. The red line designates the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Main Line. The yellow is the Union Pacific and of course, the blue is the San Joaquin Valley Railroads. So all of this product is coming from the Midwest. It comes into Fresno, either from the north or the south. Canolas generally come out of Canada. Some of the dry distillers grain we're talking about comes out of the Dakotas, Iowa, Illinois. Depending on which area it comes, it may come northbound and drop into Fresno from a north entry point. Or if it comes from like Peoria, Illinois, it will source through the southern part of the United States and, and run up from the south going north. But at all points for us, as far as RBT, and you can see, basically, our location is right between these two points right here. So we're about twenty-one miles south of Fresno. All of those Union Pacific or Burlington Northern Santa Fe unit trains of this grain arrive into Fresno and are then are interchanged to the San Joaquin Valley Railroad, of which at that time, they take those trains and deliver them to our location here. So usually when the Burlington Northern Santa Fe or the SJVR arrives, one of these unit trains, time is of the essence to get it moving and get it delivered. So everything sources out of Fresno to us. Now, the SJVR, as, as what we show here, they serve RBT Port of Ivory seven days a week, three sixty-five. That's them actually running this line seven days a week. Currently, like I said, we're getting five days, a six day as needed to. But the SJVR is running over this line seven days a week because they've got customers up and down this line. So Sanger is a big customer collection point for them because they have the Sanger Industrial Park there and they have large companies like International Paper that are receiving large volumes of traffic here. So the SJVR operates, their schedules differ based on amount of traffic, based on the time the trains arrive, based on customer requirements. So they're, they're serving this line continuously. The other thing too, that's important to note, they have an operation up here in Fresno. So their only way to arrive Fresno is from Exeter. They're based out of Exeter, so that's where their hub operation initiates out of. So from Exeter, they can run it west to Huron, they run to Fresno and Fresno on out to Oxallas, Fireball, all the way down to Burl. Questions?
Questions? If there's no question, then we're gonna move, we're gonna continue with the public comment. Does anybody wish to make any comments for the project? Put your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mike Slater. I'm attorney for RBT in Port of Ivory. And I was the attorney that negotiated the settlement two years ago with Richard Harriman and his clients. And typically, I don't read letters into the record, but your staff has asked me to read a letter into the record. It's in your packet. It's in response to Mr. Harriman's letter of two days ago. This was sent to you yesterday afternoon. And in, in summary really, it states that Mr. Harriman's comments should be disregarded because they don't amount to substantial evidence in the record, they lack any credibility. And so I will, if you bear with me, I know it's been a long presentation already, but I will do my best to read through this. Letter was dated yesterday and it was addressed to Mr. Bach and Ms. Hill. This law firm represents Richard Best Transfer, Inc., the applicant in the above referenced matter. We are in receipt of Mr. Harriman's September twenty-one, twenty fifteen letter in which Mr. Harriman asserts his client's objections to the master site plan for the Port of Ivory Industrial Park, Roman numeral one, settlement agreement. As the commission is aware, in June two thousand and eleven, Mr. Harriman and his clients Roger Wasdowski and Dinuba Citizens for Responsible Planning filed a petition for writ of mandate challenging the county's compliance with its zoning ordinance and connections with activities conducted on the Port of Ivory property. In April twenty twelve, the parties reached resolution of litigation agreeing, among other things, that the applicant would employ certain interim operational restrictions to mitigate the noise, dust and odor allegedly emitting from the longstanding operation of the Port of Ivory facility. We attach the settlement agreement, although it's not attached in your packet. You have a copy of the settlement agreement in your packet, just not attached to the letter. In that settlement agreement, RBT agrees to do the following. A, interim design measures with operational restrictions, and I list those just to be brief. And we've complied with all of those interim measures without any complaint from the petitioners. B, there was an interim operation statement. The settlement agreement included an operation statement to which RBT has complied without complaint since the settlement. C, industry resources regarding removal of K gray materials. The settlement agreement required RBT to provide petitioners with a professional resource regarding the standard in the industry for removing hardened material from rail cars. RBT complied with that condition without complaint. D, master site plan. The settlement agreement required RP, RBT and Port of Ivory to file a master site plan review for operation of a future anticipated and expanded facility, which includes a construction of commodities building. RB, RBT agreed to follow the county's environmental review process, including provided a traffic impact study, a noise study and an updated operation statement that includes expanded operation. RBT has attempted to comply with the master site plan review process, but is faced with objection from petitioners restating many, if not all, of the same complaints. Future communications. Settlement agreement advised petitioners that if they had any complaints regarding the ongoing operation of Port of Ivory, to notify Richard Best, Mr. Best is sitting in the audience with us. From that, from the date of settlement through late September, there have been no comments or complaints regarding the Port of Ivory operation. Two, no special notice required and no breach of settlement agreement. Mr. Harriman is correct that the application for PSR fourteen dash zero zero five commenced in November for, twenty fourteen. However, Mr. Harriman implies that the county and/or RBT breached the settlement agreement by not providing petitioners with notice that RBT filed the application for the master site plan review. Mr. Harriman cites paragraph sixteen B of the settlement in support of this agreement that petitioners were not provided notice under the settlement agreement. There's a typo in there, I think he's referring to section six B, not sixteen B. I've quoted, quoted the actual section from the settlement agreement, I won't bother reading that to you. But to be clear, there's nothing in the settlement agreement that requires RB to, RBT to provide petitioners with notice of the filing of the application for the master site plan review. The settlement agreement simply allows petitioners to be notified, participate in and to oppose any future operations. As Mr. Bach indicated to you earlier, they were notified, they are, they have and are participating in the process, end up objecting. So there has been no breach. The county and RBT have complied with this provision. Petitioners were provided the required notice under the county's ordinance and any applicable state law. Petitioners were not entitled by law or settlement agreement to be notified of RBT's application for a master site plan review. There has been no breach of the settlement agreement by RBT. Three, the master site plan for Port of Ivory is not incomplete and deficient. Mr. Harriman's comments should be disregarded as hearsay and lacking credibility. Mr. Harriman's comments regarding Mr. Ennis's opinions, Mr. Ennis is an engineer, amount to hearsay and are therefore not credible and should not be considered a substantial evidence in the record. Mr. Ennis has not provided any comments or appeared in any form regarding this project. Moreover, Mr. Harriman notes that Mr. Ennis has not had an opportunity to fully review RBT's application and supporting documents. Four, Mr. Harriman's comments regarding the two thousand and seven negative declaration are conclusionary and unsubstantiated by credible evidence. Mr. Harriman's comments that the two thousand and seven negative declaration adopted in January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine and therefore outdated inadequate are conclusionary statements and is non-expert opinion unsubstantiated by any credible evidence in the record. In fact, Mr. Harriman concludes by stating that petitioner's civil engineer is currently reviewing the traffic setting and has not formulated an opinion regarding the adequacy of the study. This does not constitute substantial nor credible evidence in the record. Five, the operational statement is not minimal and inadequate. Again, Mr. Harriman makes a conclusionary statement unsupported by substantial or credible evidence in the record. Mr. Harriman's comment in this regard should be disregarded. And finally, Roman numeral six, the master site plan resolution is adequate. Mr. Harriman's comments regarding the adequacy of the master site plan resolution should be disregarded. Mr. Harriman's comments are unsupported by fact, law or law and therefore should not be considered by the planning commission. And we asked staff to bring this to your attention, they did, it's in your packet. I can answer any questions you want regarding the settlement agreement, the negotiations thereof. And that would conclude my presentation unless you have any questions.
Questions up here?
Thank you.
Okay, so this is for, for the project. Are you for the project, are you gonna? If not, let's hear the, any comments for or against the project. I'm sorry, what?
I'm the opposition.
Okay, then let's hear from the opposition.
Name is Roger Wasdowski and I live about eight hundred feet southwest, or that is southeast of the project. And Mr. Slater knows that we had a meeting with him and Mr. Best at the time we signed this, had this agreement for the interim period. And at that time, we listed our complaints of noise and odor. And from that point forward, we assumed that he would reduce it, but he did not. And Mr. Slater was trying to say that we had no complaints. But he, he heard our complaints at that time. But right now, the main problem, which has been kind of glossed over and not even mentioned today, is at the four twenty-four avenue crossing, there's a lot of problem with the noise of the horns at night. For instance, recently, they tutored their horn more than fifty times over about a two-hour period of time. And that was from like two in the morning until about three or five. Now, the main reason they had to keep going back and forth across this point is the deficiency in the design of the track system onsite. The whole spur mechanism or layout is positioned too far south so that every time they come in with a long train, they have to go back and forth repeatedly across four twenty-four in order to get the other end of the train into the area. Now, that in effect means that the rail yard, this onsite extends clear offsite for about another fifteen hundred feet to the southeast, clear over to road seventy-two. And they had to go back and forth over that distance using that track to get onto their site. Now, when they pull forward, I guess they had to toot the horn four times, but not when they back up. Now, this means they're tuting it at four twenty-four. Let me give you a handout here so you can look at some things I had to reference here. I have eight copies here. Should have given you that to begin with. But I'd like to know also, what is it, state, federal or county, whatever the regulation is, on how long a particular road crossing can be blocked by the train without moving forward or backward? Because recently, in the last ten days or so, they were out there with a long train and they blocked four twenty-four for a total of fifty-eight minutes without unblocking it. During that time, you're gonna look at page two, there's a picture of that crossing. During that time, you can see the flashing red lights, their ringing bell. And then every time they go forward or backward, at this point, maybe the train is up, the engine up by road seventy-two farther to the southeast. Anyway, it blocks traffic, emergency traffic, ambulance are placed, whoever wanted to get through there. And if they're blocking seventy-two at the same time, they might have to go another five miles to get around over towards Reedley if they're trying to get that way. Four twenty-four is the real main artery between Reedley and Dinuba. You might want to do a study on that to see how many thousand cars go through there. But the train people seem to have no concern. But, uh, the train people seem to have no conception or no problem about blocking the road. Now, all this racket in the middle of the night, why don't they just come in the daytime so they aren't gonna be waking us up repeatedly, like about every other night doing this? Uh, but of course, if they did in the daytime, they'd have more traffic blocked. But the solution to the problem of that happening so much, if you want to look it over at, uh, page nine, there's a diagram of the supposedly, uh, new rail track that's gonna extend clear up north to avenue four thirty. I put a little notation there. Why don't they just put a, uh, piece of track between those two tracks right there so that they can come in from the south, pull clear up to that point right there, unhook the engines, and go back over to the main track, come back around, and then push the track, the whole road, cars clear up to the north without even having to go back down across four twenty-four, maybe as many as six to ten times? In other words, pull into the site one time to begin with, and you no longer have to go back over four twenty-four because you've designed it so that you can do all this hooking and unhooking of railroad cars completely on the site rather than coming down here and blocking traffic and causing that bell to ring and tooting their horns. Now, whoever designed this to begin with, that was a main problem. They didn't have much foresight, or they didn't care about the neighborhood. This whole spur apparatus or layout should've been completely farther north. They got a hundred and ten acres there. Why do they have to jam it way down here, the extreme southern portion? And then there's about six or eight houses right along the other side of the ditch up there that it's impacting. And then, when I do deliver the, cars in the middle of the night, sometimes they're sitting up there idling the, the engine for maybe as long as one or two hours, doesn't seem to be doing much of anything, like as if they're taking a break before they go on to their next project. Or they might, somebody said they're not supposed to operate more than so many hours during a time period, so they're gonna have interruption, and that's where they do it. Now, the road seventy-two crossing, they don't have a crossing arm and an alarm system there yet, but I assume it's a matter of time that they will. But it would make it safer if you would require RBT and company, whoever else is up there, to implement this plan where they don't go back and forth across, uh, both of those crossings. And maybe they wouldn't have to have as much necessity to, uh, well, that's on page three, if you wanna look at that. That's a view of the crossing facing to the north. And I talked to a couple people over there, and, uh, I have consulted with people along the general area along the track here, and, uh, every one of them is kind of perturbed about this racket from the train horn noise, and, uh, except one that said she liked to hear the horn. I guess they think it's kind of like nostalgic off in the distance when they're trying to sleep sometimes or something. But anyway, back on, uh, page four, you can see the lower photo of how the line of cars is lined up all along there. And one of the neighbors over there says that what they do is, the traffic, rather than wait, they go along a dirt road on the west side and come over past his property and get on the seventy-two that way. And I saw that road was fairly well-traveled. I mean, it looked like it. Can we find out from Mr. Littlefield if whether, is there a limit on the amount of time that you can block that road without being, uh, without opening it up? Is there some federal regulation? Or is he having?
We'll research it out.
Pardon me?
We'll research it out.
Now, other than the train noise, there is periodic odor, although it hasn't been that bad lately. And I'm wondering whether enclosing the building is really gonna change that, that much, because they're probably gonna have ventilation going through there. And the question too is, uh, supposedly, the whole operation's going to be enclosed, but curiously, the track doesn't even go in the building. So a lot of the portion of the unloading apparatus is gonna be outside of the building, and then how noisy is that gonna be? And also, if that loader broke down, are they gonna go back to the same outdoor commodity unloading? And also, is there any regulation by the county that when they have the building, do they have to do it inside the building, or are they still completely open to do it outside the building? Which might mean that really, they're increasing the whole operation because they're gonna be doing it in the building and outside the building both as a potentiality. And the county had said, uh, in their comments that, uh, they could do hammering. They're not supposed to do hammering unless needed. That opens it up to be in kind of vague as, uh, what the percentage is of what they would be able to do the hammering, like as needed. Is that like fifty percent of the time, or is there any stipulation on that? And also, the, the noise studies that were done, there's two aspects that are, I didn't see any mention about that at all. Mr. Slater says, uh, Mr. Harriman is just not credible, but he did mention that we got a very loud vibration machine that's operating now, sounds like the bass tone of an organ, and that's going sometimes for maybe off and on for two or three hours during the day. And other people in the neighborhood have complained about it. And we haven't heard a prohibition about, absolutely, you don't do it, but I guess they're still open to be able to do it if they want to. And also, if they're doing the unloading with one car, are they gonna be keeping up with the capacity that they want to do it? Will that do it fast enough? Or are they gonna still be doing the outdoor operation alongside it at the same time? Now, the horn racket, fifty times over two hours, I don't see that showing up in any noise study anyplace, but the, they're saying that the negative declaration, which was determined way before this new development happened, is still valid. So just repeating part of this deal, the, the area of operation along the tracks is beside the RBT-owned property, but they're still using the area that they don't own as a full-fledged part of their railroad yard, because they go back and forth maybe ten times or so in the middle of the night, going across both of those, both of those crossings, four twenty-four and seventy-two. Now, some of these people that are saying there's no credibility in effect to what the surrounding community is saying, well, of course not, they don't live here. Well, I have to admit that what they propose here as their improvement does look pretty good, it sounds pretty good, if they abide by pretty much what they say they're gonna be doing, unless there's some other new noise factor that we haven't thought of that's still, still gonna continue. But what they define here looks all great and everything on the video and everything, uh, however, this idea of them not being able to come in and do all their unloading and unloading completely on-site once they get there, that's not even addressed. And I assume that blowing the horn fifty times during a two-hour period of time, according to them, there's nothing wrong with it, or I haven't heard otherwise. I am about, uh, maybe eight hundred feet from the train before it goes across four twenty-four going south, so it's kind of a straight shot of the racket at that point. There was never a full-fledged environmental impact done on this whole project, and if there ever was a project that needed it, I think this is it. Of course, uh, some of the evaluation independently is valuable and maybe enough in some people's Also, indication is that, uh, Ruben Navarro is not totally, he doesn't have no worries about this project, as I think Mr. Slater, or Mr. Littlefield, whichever one it was, was implying, because he did agree recently that the train horn noise that I've been talking about, the frequency of it is still a problem to him, although he did mention that other aspects of the problem, or the project, were not as much of a problem as he thought they were at one time. Now, what is the reason for not delivering these trains, commodity, in the daytime? Why do they have to come in the middle of the night? I mean, still, it's gonna be racket, but it wouldn't be waking people up all along the track as much. And I agree, of course, with Mr. Harriman, the negative declaration done way back then doesn't address issues that are going on now that are new, like the new horn noise and the vibrating from that, uh, vibrating machine that RBT invented, they said. It's probably a good idea to use it, but sometimes it's so loud that, uh, I have to wake up and see that the sun's just barely coming up, and that's what's contributing to being woke up at that time. And there was mentioned in the document too, the four hundred pages, that, uh, they were gonna be starting at five o'clock in the morning. Now, I'm glad to hear that they're gonna maintain it has to be at six o'clock, but it really be more reasonable to be seven o'clock. And sometimes they said, oh, we're gonna operate from dawn until dusk, and that's kind of a pretty variable. I mean, sun goes down to maybe four-thirty sometimes, it's early, and other times to like seven-thirty. Seems to me like seven in the morning till seven at night should be enough. And this idea about, uh, oh, there was a sawmill on the site years ago, so therefore, what's the big deal about this? It's not like a sawmill. Well, the fact of the matter is, the sawmill was there in the AE twenty zone as an exception to the rule, because, uh, they had a special use permit, which let them make all kinds of racket and noise, which even though it bothered the residential community, they just decided they had to live with it, or what could they do? And now, it might be a repeat of that going on now, except that if we can assume and believe about how good this is gonna be, like the new building going in, we don't really know till we just see what happens. And hopefully, we can still have some communication and input if it's still a problem. So, uh, I guess that pretty well covers what I had to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
I'm gonna have to leave. I've got a funeral of a dear friend that I must.
Okay.
I will listen to the tape here between now and when you can, can you?
Maybe a good time for one more break.
I'll be, I'll be up to speed when, when you get back.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. Uh, we'll come, uh, we'll come back at five till.
They're here.
Worth a try.
Okay, let's, uh, continue where we left off, and I think we are, we have, uh, we're at the point of, uh, taking public comments. Uh, I wanna limit, limit the, any additional comments to three minutes and don't repeat stuff that we're already, uh, commented on. Uh, do we have anybody wishing to make any, uh, additional comments for or against the project at this time? Seeing none, did, uh, did the applicant wanna make any comments regarding what was said?
Still a little chance.
The only thing that I would add is that we'd be, uh, given the opportunity to offer rebuttal after, I know this matter's gonna be continued to October fourteenth, and I anticipate Mr. Harriman will be back with additional, uh, dialogue, and we'd reserve, like to reserve the opportunity to rebut at that time, if that would be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, again, for the people that just entered, I wanna make sure we get all of the comments recorded, that you might wanna make any testimony on so that we could have an opportunity to look at it before the next, uh... Yeah, anything new. All right, uh, seeing none, we're gonna keep the public comment open, uh, and then I wanna entertain, uh, any questions up here?
I, I have a comment. I'm, this may be, um, more addressed to the, to staff, but what I was just hearing about the discussion relative to, um, problems with the railroad and the horns at the crossing, um, not to sound like Yogi Berra, but by the way, he passed away today or yesterday, um, is it feasible to do a feasibility study of that crossing to do an under or overpass?
Commissioner Millies, those will be part of our, part of our, that'll be part of our discussions. Um, but the feasibility in and of themselves will also be a matter of, uh, what the applicant can afford, so, um, they, they will be part of the discussions, and we will return to you with those, uh, as, as Mr. Harriman suggested, he might put those type of numbers together for, for all these, uh, uh, solutions, as he might call them. But, uh, we'll, we'll see as part of the discussions how feasible they are. And we'll return them with, to the commission with all those notes.
Are there other businesses in that industrial park?
We stated all the businesses in the industrial park. We stated all the businesses in the industrial park at the beginning of the presentation.
I don't remember seeing.
Including, uh, Mar, Marimonti, um, and the other entities out there. For all six different parcels.
Well, it's, okay, fine.
Mr. Bach, would it be, um, possible to include the railroad in some of these discussions? Because it sounds to me like some of this going on is the railroad and not the Mr., the Best Company. I'm just asking, has that been done?
Well, as far as, uh, we, we know that it, they're mandated by the federal administration, so that they have, uh, priority over us. Uh, we, at best, I think at this point, we could, uh, request, uh, that they send letters to them, um, or request that they change these things, but I, I don't think we'd be able to, uh, actually cause them to, to make any changes to their timing or anything else like that.
And I, I wasn't so much suggesting changes, maybe informing some of the complaints, answers to some of the complaints, that maybe it isn't just...
I, I think as part of this process, yes, we will inform them as to these complaints.
Thank you.
It seems like too, the site is big enough that maybe they could unblock some of the crossings at certain key times, especially during the day.
Well, and that'll be definitely part of this discussion and part of the feasibility, uh, analysis that we'll be doing as part of these discussions.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I think, I didn't hear all the, the businesses, and I apologize, but it seems if there are multiple businesses, that that's not just something to be borne by the Best organization.
What, what was that?
The feasibility, should we look at all the other organizations or companies in that industrial park that could share that kind of, of an investment in an under or overpass?
Well, and I, I think as the managers of the park, I, I think they, uh, would definitely include that as part of the, the cost for those tenants out there, but I don't think, uh, that, they're not necessarily owners, so it, it changes that analysis a little bit, but that, I'm sure will be considered.
Even the railroad could be in that.
All right, I make a motion.
Okay. Okay, we're going to keep the public comment open, and I guess we are ready for a motion.
A motion that the planning commission continue the hearing date to a time certain, October fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Moving to second, roll call please.
Don.
Yes.
Millie.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Villiano.
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been approved. There will not be any other notice, is that correct, Aaron?
That is correct.
So be here out, what, October fourteenth for the continuing of this hearing. Motion pass.